Church, please just in prayer. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are grateful tonight that we can come to a meeting where we know you're going to be because we know, Father, you are in all places, and we pray that you will bless the decisions that come out of here tonight with your wisdom. Father, we love Monticello. We are grateful for the wonderful things that the leaders around this table will be able to make decisions that benefit us all tonight. We ask you in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Roll call, please, Jill.
Sorry, John. Ms. Muse.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Reed. Ms. Vought.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Terry brought the sheet up and no one has signed in. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through rub conference. Is there anyone remote?
There is none.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items as listed. Claims report, claims dated October 25, 2022 through November 14, 2022. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, October 24, 2022. City council study session meeting minutes, November 7, 2022. Budget report, September 2022. Permit report, October 2022. Fire report, October 2022. Treasurer's report, October 2022. Police report, October 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comment or discussion before we vote? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Ms. Muse.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Vought.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. I would like to announce the resignation of Tammy Stevens, Alderwoman Ward III, and Monticello Police Department Chief John Carter effective immediately. I would like to thank both of them for their service to our community. Business news, the grand opening of Grace in May, 216 West Washington Street, will be Friday, November 18. Willow Tree Resale Shop will be opening their downtown location starting December 7 and will be open Wednesdays through Saturdays. Make sure you stop by and welcome both these businesses to downtown. Some upcoming events. Polar Express starts this weekend and will run Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays through December 11. Piatt County Trailblazers are serving breakfast on Sundays at the Trailblazers facilities, and I think this is all the way until January, so it's a weekly event. The Investor Coffee for the Sangamon Valley CEO Class is scheduled for next Tuesday morning, November 22, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at Three Ravens 2. I hope you have the opportunity to stop by and introduce yourself to this year's class. Counsel, please save the date for the Strategic Plan Workshop on Tuesday, January 10, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Livingston Center. It is very important that you attend and participate. Moving on to new business, public hearing. I need a motion to open a public hearing, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act.
To move.
Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Aye.
She's just late.
There's a delay.
Terry.
So this is just the public hearing portion.
Right.
Ahead of the resolution to follow, Resolution 22-44.
Are there any comments from the audience in regard to this issue? Are there any comments online to do with this issue? I'll try once more. Are there any comments from those present? Or online? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2022-44, Resolution authorizing the city of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois to issue its revenue bond foundation therapy and wellness capital project series 2022 for the purpose of providing funds to finance and refinance the costs of a project for foundation therapy and wellness capital, and authorizing and approving certain documents and other actions in connection with the issuance of said bond. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to refer to this as Resolution 2022-44. So some of the background information, so if you recall earlier this year, some representatives from Kirby Medical Center approached city staff and began discussions on the city acting as a conduit for our issuing of a revenue bond in the amount of $10 million for the therapy and wellness capital project at Sage Crossing subdivision. At the regularly scheduled city council meeting held on September 26 this year, the city council approved the Resolution 2022-36. With the approval of that inducement resolution, the city council approved the city's intent revenue bonds to finance and refinance the costs associated with the therapy and wellness capital project. City of Monticello has annual bonding authority for $10 million for certain types of projects such as this therapy and wellness capital project. As the conduit issuer, the city of Monticello will issue the bonds that will be purchased by First Midbank and Trust. First Midbank and Trust will finance the project through the bond proceeds with the building and land collateralizing, collateralizing, excuse me, the loan. City of Monticello is not financing the project. With us tonight are representatives from Kirby Medical Center, First Bank, First Midbank and Trust, and Ansel Glink, I think is joining us remotely to answer any questions that we may have. It is recommended the city council discuss and approve Resolution 2022-44, thus authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the loan agreement, tax compliance agreement, and other required and supporting documents. So I would turn it over to the city council to discuss, and again, they're representatives that are here to answer your questions as well as our legal attorney.
Okay. Anyone on the council have a question or concern, comment?
Got a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. So in order for this not to impact the city's borrowing power or ability in 2023, does this bond need to be issued between now and the end of the year?
Yes.
What are the plans for that? Because I'm just thinking realistically, two weeks is Thanksgiving, and it's very difficult to get anything done at the end of the year.
All right. I'm Patrick Wees. I'm representing First Midbank and Trust. I'm the commercial lender there. All the background and third-party services have been completed. Construction loan documentation is readily prepared, and we anticipate to have a closing on the loan on December 15.
Okay. Very good. The second one, forgive me, nobody else has any questions? The actual conduit itself provides a significant cost savings for the hospital in terms of interest rate, and I think it's a fair question to see that's, those savings, what are the plans to pass that on to the community in some form for the hospital itself?
I guess I'm Kim Alvis, the chief financial officer. So the $10 million that we're asking for does not fund the whole project, so I think some of that tax interest savings will be able to allow us to put the rest of the $4.5 million into that. And as a business here in the community, we always support, you know, the community efforts and things too, so we provide charity care and have a lot of other activities that we do within the community that we will be supporting with those.
Yep, so there's no plans to pass on the savings to the community outside of the current activities at the hospital's engagement?
I would say not at this point. You know, I think that the plan first is we have to use tax savings to fund the project, the $4.5 million that we're taking out of our operating cash, and then after that, you know, we would continue to see what we would be doing for the community.
My name's Michelle Rose. If I can add on, I'm treasurer of the Kirby Governing Board, and I would say that that's something that the foundation and the governing board looks at continuously, are different things that we can do for the community, and that's, we have expanded the wellness trail, thanks to the generosity of the Skaggenbergs, but we're also putting some additional areas out there that will help for people to be able to stop and rest. There's some other things that we're doing within the schools to help. There are nurses, right now, is in Monticello School, which is funded all completely by Kirby, and there's some other programs that we're looking to potentially add to various schools within the county, not just in Monticello, but around the area. So these are all things that both the foundation and the governing board look at continuously to try to add value.
And so if there's something that happens after, on December 15, that prevents us from going through with the issuance of the bonds, would this be something we revisit again for 2023 if we miss that date? To where a yes tonight doesn't say, doesn't lock us in for a 2023 commitment?
I don't know if, I mean, by all accounts, they're wanting to close by the...
That is the plan that this will...
Yeah, I think we're all in our understanding that this needs to close in 2022, and if we can't close by 2022, it's not going to happen.
I agree. I don't want this to go into 2023 and impact our ability to do some of the plans that we are, we have been discussing recently with, as of last Monday, so...
Right. So, yeah, December 15, you have everything ready to be able to close.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I would add, with the revenue bonds, and correct me if I'm wrong, we need three-fifths permanent vote, so that it be followed.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-44, Resolution authorizing the city of Monticello, Piatt County to issue the revenue bond foundation therapy and wellness capital project for the purpose of providing funds to finance and refinance the costs of a project for foundation therapy and wellness capital, and authorizing, approving certain documents and other actions in connection with the issuance of said bond? Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more comments or questions?
Just want to emphasize, this got to bleed into 2023.
Right. Jill, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Vought.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mayor Stoner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution 2022-45, Truth in Taxation Law Resolution.
Mr. Summers.
Let the room clear out a little bit. Just talk louder, it'll be okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So every year we do this. State statute established procedures and requirements for determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised from a property tax levy by a municipality. In accordance with the truth in taxation law, the city council must approve an estimated tax levy at least 20 days prior to adoption of the final levy. Is estimated, if the estimated property tax levy is less than 105% of the prior year levy, not be required to advertise intent and hold public hearing on the levy. City administration has estimated the FY 2023 property tax levy to be $839,358, which is approximately 4.9% over the previous year's levy. The 2023 tax levy ordinance will be placed on the December 12 city council meeting for your approval. You have a draft of that ordinance in this evening's packet. It is recommended the city council discuss established tax levy amount and approve Resolution 2022-45 as presented.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Terry, when's the last time we haven't done 4.9%? I cannot remember the last time we have not done 4.9%.
Now, could you get the door, please? Mara?
Thank you. And that, just to reiterate to everybody, that doesn't increase your property taxes by 4.9%.
Yeah, good point. At last week's budget, study session we had, I did provide you with historic numbers from '15 through payable 2022, and I looked at a $200,000 house. 2016, it was $4,348 in property taxes. '17 was $4,349. It does not increase the 4.9%.
Is there a, did we have a motion? I've lost track.
No motion.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-45, a truth in taxation law resolution?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, Jill, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Muse.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Vought.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item D on the agenda, Waste Hauler Discussion and Motion Only to Enter Into a Contract for Refugees and Recycling Collection Program with either Green for Life Environmental, GFL, or Republic Services. I'd last, would like the gentlemen that are representing the companies to move up to the tables. We're putting one at one table and one at the other table. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we began this process earlier this year, if you recall. Currently, the city provides for a licensure program for residential waste hauling. The program was initiated in 2015 and allows for up to four residential waste haulers to operate within the corporate boundaries. There have never been four waste haulers interested in serving the community, and there is currently one waste hauler operating with a license here in Monticello. At the regularly scheduled city council meeting held on June 13, the city council began discussing the possibility of contracting with one waste hauler for residential refuse and recycling collection. The consensus of the city council at that meeting was to have the city administrator draft another request for proposal for one waste hauler system. A follow-up residential waste hauling discussion was conducted at your August 8 city council meeting, a thorough review of the revised residential refuse and recycling collection program requests for proposals was conducted at that meeting. The request for proposal was publicly released on August 12. Mandatory pre-proposal meeting was held on September 6 with Green for Life Environmental and Republic Services in attendance. There was no other waste hauler in attendance. Sealed proposals were received from GFL and Republic and opened by the city administrator on October 11. Tonight, joining us tonight is Eric Changrow with Green for Life Environmental and Tony Moore, and I apologize, I forgot...
Dan Winters.
Dan Winters with Republic Services to answer any and all questions. So there's been a timeframe laid out from early on this year. All those dates have been met, so it is recommended the city council discuss and make a motion directing me to enter into a contract with one waste hauler. If so directed, the contract will be provided for city council consideration and award at the next meeting on November 28 for implementation, January 1, or very soon thereafter. So I would ask discussion tonight and then a motion directing me to move forward with either GFL or Republic this evening.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, comments, questions of our guests this evening?
We didn't have a proposal, correct, that matched the request for services to the T, correct? Was there a specific issue with the way that it was requested, or is there certain obstacles that maybe we didn't understand as a council?
So real quick, yes. Either waste hauler met every single aspect of that request for proposal. So in reviewing it, I think I mentioned some of you, it was literally like comparing apples to... Mayor Stoner and I sat down with each representatives from each company, kind of as a clarification meeting on what they were willing to provide and what they weren't willing to provide, and then I handed everybody some notes comparing both public and GFL. But to help with that too, for our standpoint, you know, when we see those kind of RFPs, at Republic, what we're trying to do is not only meet your needs, but still make your service to where it's more affordable for your community. So there were a few things in there that, you know, we're just, we would have probably got your bill up to where it's at now, you know, so just saying, hey, we can't throw this in, but we can give you, you know, better pricing, whether the case may be on those items, is some of the things that we ran into.
One of the things I noticed, several items are comparable between the two companies. For the walk-up service for trash and walk-up service for recycling, I noticed with GFL there was the limited, and then beyond 30 households would be a $75 per month per household billed to the city. And then no additional charge with Republic, and then for recycling, that walk-up option not available. I mean, is that something with GFL that is, it's just not possible?
Yeah, you know, we're just trying to keep our employees off people's private property.
Okay.
Safety folks will tell us that's sometimes when they, more likely to get hurt when you're going to step in somebody's yard and hit a hole, as opposed to having the waste at the curb.
Thank you.
But you guys are willing to take on that to help.
The only thing that we ask is that we can actually see the containers, and by seeing them too, not like inside somebody's garage or...
Right.
Out of their property, and they can be visible from the road.
Don't want to go empty the trash in the house and...
Correct, yes.
To try to get verification.
Or the dog.
Sorry, another one of my unhelpful comments.
I like it.
And a 30 cap that we have is about what we're doing, it's about what we decided we're doing now in town.
Yeah. Well, and then from the city's standpoint, if we were to go with GFL and we went over that 30, not $75 per month, is that something that the city would absorb? Do we need to budget that in, or is that something that would be passed on to those customers?
I would envision that we would absorb that.
I had a question also with billing. I mean, at this point, billing is taken care of through the company with, with this, our city staff taking on billing through Republic, is that something that is pretty standard in the communities where you have your service?
It is, yeah. All the contracts that we have are summary billed.
Okay.
So we just build through the city, and then the city builds the residents on their water.
So if somebody had a question or concern about the service, not the billing, would they contact your company or contact the city, and then the city contacts you? How does that work?
So either options, good. So that's my only purpose for this organization is to make sure that we are taking care of everything in the community. So your board, your city officials, your public works, whoever would all have my contact information if they're hearing anything, I can contact them. The residents as well can reach out to our customer service.
Okay.
One of the things that we've done for other communities too is set up an email address. The residents can shoot an email off, and it would go to myself, to Dan, and to our local operations guys to try to help out there.
And that would be exclusive for Monticello, residents only.
Okay.
So whenever they get this email, they know it's your residents.
Yep.
So I guess along those same lines, and we let both companies answer, because one of the concerns that the citizens have is if waste doesn't get picked up, and it's late or whatever, then they have no recourse. We've got a contract with one, so we want to assure with whoever we go with, customer service. So just give me an idea of what that customer service looks like, and if a resident calls and said, hey, you know, my trash is not picked up today, how is that communicated, and how are those things resolved? Just to ease the tensions between the customers and the company, because before, when we had multiple licenses, then they, if we didn't like one service, they could go to somebody else. That's not going to be an option, especially, you know, we're going to go into a five-year contract with somebody.
So, yeah, we have, you know, customer service staff in Clinton, Illinois, that is full-time and answers the phone. They have direct contact with route supervisors and the general managers who can get back to the drivers. And with a contract, then if our residents aren't happy, they can come to you, who can go right to Terry, to us, and the people at the higher management level to make sure that those concerns are addressed and taken care of.
Are there then, if there's issues, are there discounts or things, way that they can resolve that way? Because naturally, at a city our size, there's going to be things that happen where, you know, maybe that there needs to be something given back to the customer.
Right, and if we're doing the billing, we're able to put credits back on accounts if somebody has missed a couple weeks in a row. So say they're arguing they didn't have trash service for half a month, you know, we can put that back on there, especially if it's been documented and has become a problem, as a way to appease that situation.
Okay.
Yeah, for us, obviously, service reliability is something that we take very serious. Any municipal contract that we have is, at our standpoint, it's guaranteed work rate, so you have to treat that with the best abilities you can. So just like I said, we have our communication piece open there. The other good thing is with our plan that we're looking at, we'll actually be in your community multiple days, so if there is any misses or anything like that, we can always stop by up here at City Call Pool, we take off of town, say, hey, have you heard anything? Those guys make sure they check the call logs, everything else where they take off out of town. But, yeah, I mean, mistakes are going to happen without a doubt, whether it be us missing one on accident or someone not taking it out on time. But, you know, our reliability rate across the company is 99.9%, and, you know, that's our goal, is to give that to everybody.
I may add to that, our drivers have the ability, if there is a block, the trash, or something's going on, they can take a picture. That immediately goes to dispatch that can provide a picture to staff or whoever, the customer. And we eventually, we're in it with the commercial containers, we're going to go where your residents will be able to go see where our truck's at, and they'll be able to track the truck and say, oh, he's two blocks away, just running late today. But we, anytime there's inclement weather, we do call malls, we do anything we can. Ultimately, that email works the best if there is a service issue, because that goes out to everybody immediately.
Where do the trucks come from?
We're going to run this out of Bana, Illinois.
Current containers are okay, as is?
So that's, I'm sure there's a little bit different in pricing, and I haven't seen what GFL has offered, but for us, we would have to purchase all...
I haven't seen what GFL has offered, but for us, we would have to purchase all brand-new capital for the community. So everybody, we're getting brand-new recycling containers, trash containers, you know, things like that to come in. So it's a big investment for us as far as that piece on what we're bringing.
So I guess my question is...
I have a...
Ashley?
I'm sorry, I just, based upon what Republic said about purchasing the new totes or carts, I noticed that GFL does offer the 64 to 65 gallon cart, whereas Republic does not offer anything smaller than the 94 to 95 gallon cart. And I just was curious if there's a reason for that, because usually, like if your household doesn't need such a large cart, I think the pricing of the tote was always based on size before. So is this just because it's a whole citywide contract, sort of one-size-fits-all deal? Or what would be the reason behind not offering the smaller gallons?
Yeah, no, I think you kind of hit it there at the end, right? It is a one-size-fits-all for sure. We've also found multiple times where we do bring a 64 container into somebody's home, things change throughout time and they want to replace it for a bigger one. It's just been more cost efficient for us to just say, hey, everybody's going to have this 95 gallon container. We can order them in bulk that way. And to be honest, they're a lot easier for our trucks to grab with the arms than the smaller ones are.
But I can speak as, I can speak as somebody, because that's one concern that I have. I don't have, I don't have room in my garage for a 95 gallon. So having, it's a great option, there's no way that you could offer that as, I mean, I don't even care if the price is the same. It just, it just takes up way more room than I have and I don't have, I don't need that big of a cart.
Yes, I think the carts too, when you hear the bigger thing, but there's a lot of height in there as well. The actual width of the containers is not much different.
The footprint is simply...
About the same, yep.
Okay.
And we'd offer both sizes and they'd all be new. The GFL colors are now green and black, so they would all, we'd take those area carts away and...
That, okay. You take the old ones away, you guys? Do you take the old ones?
So if you went with us, that would be on GFL.
Yeah, so Area, we were purchased by GFL.
Oh, there you go.
So there are carts, but in a new contract like this with two cart sizes, we would start fresh.
Okay.
Even Young, she would come and get?
Yep.
Okay, thank God.
So the Young's one, we'd be responsible for?
No, he says they take...
Not for GFL, right?
Yep, Area, which was us.
Right, right. Young's, yeah. Yep. So Republic, we would be responsible for removal of our own current totes?
No, they would come, I mean, they would probably still...
GFL will still come and get them.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I got it.
We do, we do have community members who winter in the South. Can they pause their pickup or just still pay the same and their trash wouldn't be picked up during those?
When we're doing the billing again, we'll allow for the snowbirds to go for a quarter, three months out of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, ours is.
Okay, thank you.
But in recycling, it looks like it's both are in every other week situation. There's no wiggle room there?
We have two proposals on the table, one to pick it up weekly and to pick it up every other week.
Yeah, no, so we would, we would want to say it every two weeks. There's just, there's a bunch of different costs when it comes to recycling. Recycling's not the best that there is in the world right now.
Okay.
As far as what we pay for disposal. So locally, we partner with Midwest Fiber in Lumenton. That's where all the recycling in this community we go to. We actually pay for that services per ton. So because of all the costs that we have to have for that, it's hard to send a truck every week and still kind of recoup anything.
Okay.
Very common, that's every other week with a 95 gallon.
Glass, is that just something that just not costs per D?
We'll take glass.
Recyclable?
Yep, we'll take it.
What about? We would prefer not to see...
Who said?
I'm sorry, that's Republic Services.
Which, Republic will take glass?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask, what are the restrictions? Because it said that GFL, there were restrictions on the recycling, excuse me, and then Republic said no restrictions. So what restrictions did GFL have for recycling?
So we would, at the end of the day, you can put it all in there, but it's going to get sorted out and the stuff that has value will be sold. So the plastics that, and the items that we're looking for that have value right now are plastics one and two, which are milk jugs, tide detergent, pop bottles, the caps, cardboard, paper, mixed paper, newspaper, aluminum tin. Those are the core recycling project products that we want. Take glass, comes in our recycling plant, first thing it does is get sorted and kicked out because there's not glass in the recycling market right now. And so we're paying to either have somebody come get it and take it away or putting it in the landfill. Well, at the moment, with the way recycling is, it's cheaper to put it in the landfill. So we don't want to double handle it. We'd rather you put it in the garbage. Sand, which makes glass, remains an abundant, relatively inexpensive raw commodity in America.
Okay, and is that what's meant about diverting recyclables? That, because there was, there was a no about council approval prior to diverting recyclables and GFL said no and Republic had said yes. Does diverting mean that you're, like what you were just talking about with the glass, how you would, you would have to pay someone else to take it away or put it in a landfill? Is that, I just wasn't sure what the diverting part of that meant.
I want to speak for Midwest Fiber. They do not landfill their glass. They do have a market for it. It does cost. I mean, there's no rebate, but they do take it to a processing facility for another use that is not landfill.
But we, we at Republic would not have a big need, I think, to divert any recycling, you know? Even if the market gets the worst that it can get, I mean, I think we've already seen that and it's kind of coming back around to that again as a bad market. We've never once said, hey, there's not enough money in this that we have to take this to landfill because we can't process it in a recycling center. So diverting from the recycling center to landfill, to this day, I've never seen us do it in near 48, 5 years.
No.
So that's not going to be a conversation that we would come back with the city and have. We would figure that out internally. Republic Services is known across the nation for their recycling, so it's important for us to continue to lead from the front with that.
And we own our own recycling facility, processing facility in Pekin. That's where we'd all go, where it's sorted, baled and then sold on the market. We would invite you all to come and see. The process is pretty amazing and educational. A young person should go to a landfill and a recycling processing center.
Yeah.
What about extra trash? So I've got stuff that doesn't fit.
Christmas is coming.
Yeah, that's right, there you go. Is there an option? I mean, obviously, I would, I would be okay as a customer to say, hey, this is going to be an extra charge, but if we've got boxes and whatever that don't, that don't fit in there, how do you, how do you handle that?
Yeah, so we're in the service to pick up your trash. So I mean, that's really the best way to say it is we're going to cut it. You know, if it's a Christmas time, stuff like that, it's expected that we're going to pull up and there's going to probably be some extra bags next to the can. Our guys are going to dump the can, get out, and as long as it's something safely that they can pick up, they'll reload the can and dump it again.
Okay.
Now, if you had a home that we were constantly driving by that had three extra bags in a week, we would then want to talk to that resident about having an extra container. But odds and ends here and there, I mean, that's, that's what we're here to do. We're here to keep your community clean, so that's what we'll, we'll take care of.
And in our proposal, we wrote that you could put in an unlimited amount of extra material as long as it was properly containerized.
Okay.
In a bag that weighed less than 50 pounds, was less than 35 gallons, so a guy could easily pick it up and not injure himself. So the cart plus that.
Yeah, or car, or extra cardboard boxes or whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Any more? Ashley, you have any more questions?
I, yes, I actually did have another question about exemptions allowed. GFL, there was some restricted, and then Republic had said yes. And I just wanted to clarify what that meant. So with, excuse me, with GFL, does that mean that only businesses with dumpsters can opt out? I just want to make sure that I was understanding or reading that correctly. And then Republic, anyone can opt out? Is that the difference between the two or?
Yeah, we would say...
Did I completely misread that?
No, if somebody did have a local business here in the community that, you know, they have means to get rid of their trash, I don't think it would be good partners of us to come in and say, well, you also need to pay for your residential services as well. On the other end of that, it's not going to be a huge portion of your population. So I think it's just good for us to come in and say, hey, if they have a business that has that trash that they can take it to, we're not going to come in and push those few homes of, hey, it's in a contract here, you need to have this with us.
So I'm just thinking out loud on this. So a local pizza restaurant, the family that owns it, they can bring their residential trash to their dumpster and then they're not getting charged for the residential pickup?
If that's what the board is asking from us, yes, we would partner with you guys.
And then they would not have carts delivered to them at the time of service started.
And now some of them don't want, some business owners are like, oh, I want my trash at home.
Right.
So that's why I'm saying it's not going to be, you know, all of a sudden 30% of your population doesn't have this trash. It's a small portion.
Question for GFL, there, because there was an option of an alternate contract and you list both that the city would do the billing, I believe, so there'd be a discount there, and, but also the trash volume would be limited. And I don't know that we wouldn't do anything about, we just talked about having trash volume limited, but we, the city might entertain the discount they did the billing. Do you entertain taking one and not the other?
Sure.
Okay.
Negotiate you through those.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Is there a motion to enter into a contract with either of the?
Yeah, yes.
I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Republic.
Is there a second?
Second?
I'd like to make a motion to defer the vote to the next meeting with, when we have everybody here and that when we have the public a chance to kind of digest this, I'm assuming it'll be in the paper. We don't, we don't have the option of a first reading, second reading anymore, but I think this would be one that would warrant that.
I'm trying to think what I have to do here.
There's a motion, and for it to go anywhere further, it's got to have a second or else it dies on the vine.
Here's motion.
Yeah.
He has, he's made the motion, now it needs a second.
He's made the motion, is there a second?
I would second Mr. Coon's motion.
So we'll have to decide Mr. Coon's before we decide his votes, okay? And there's no discussion, I don't think. I think it's a straight vote. So can I have a roll call, please, on putting it off?
Yes. Yes, let me, so that was, the first motion was made by Mike and the second one by Wendell. Ms. Muse, this is the roll call to defer the vote or the vote from tonight. Mr. Clark?
No.
Ms. Vote?
No.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
No.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion does not pass.
His motion didn't pass.
Yes, there were two yeses.
Okay.
And one to...
Going on to Ms. Votes. Motion.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Vote?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
No.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentations this evening. All the persons, Ashley, do you have a report tonight?
I do not, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Rodney?
I don't.
Wendell?
Nothing.
Mary?
Answer.
Michael?
No.
And Mr. Coon? Thank you. Acting police chiefs report, Terry?
Yes, sir, I do. We did a drug takeback over this year and we just took, did it on October 31st. We also did one back in 2000, or correction, February 16. And we got 80 pounds during February and in October picked up 120.95 pounds. Were a total of 208 pounds, yeah, 208 pounds. So we were able to collect that pharmaceuticals that people had brought into the PD and we worked with mental health on this program. So we have that every year.
Can you remind me of one thing? If people have pharmaceuticals that they would like to dispose of, there are, there's Dropbox at least one place in town.
Yes, there is.
One at the hospital?
Curry, yes, sir.
Well, it's the sheriff's department.
And the sheriff's department, thank you.
Yeah.
As I, after it was over, I found some things I need to get rid of inside. Thank you. Beagle, of course. Anything else, Terry?
No, sir, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Fire chiefs report, John Rupke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We ran 40 calls last month. Had some good training. The first two weeks we did open house, we prepared for our open house, then on the second week, I was like, Mr. Mayor, thank you for showing up and walking through. I think it was the first time you've been to our...
I've lived here 50 years and I'd never been there. I thought it was awesome, so I'm going next year.
It was very well attended.
Yes.
Cooked a lot of hot dogs and got rid of a lot of hot dogs and a lot of gifts for the kids and such, and they got to climb on the fire trucks and stuff. We all had a great time. Third week, we had Carl come out, he amassed and did respiratory training, respiratory trauma firefighters, so we got some good training there. Throughout the month of October, we did a fire prevention program at the Christian Academy, went out and did fire safety with the children at the Christian Academy. Again, we had our open house on the 13th. We covered the football game, home football game for a medical emergency. On October 31st, we had trick-or-treat at the firehouse. We had some of our firefighters sit outside with some candy and we actually had our training mannequin sitting in a chair and scared the jeezus out of someone. Scared me when I rolled up, so we had, we had a good time this month, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. City administrators report, Mr. Summer.
I'd just like to thank the council and city staff again for all your efforts in our productive budget study session last Monday. I thought it went well and I appreciate everybody's efforts into the budget every year, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone have anything else to add to the cause? Hearing, none are seeing, none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? On the...